Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, May 9th, 2017. Would Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Gaylord.
Here.
Miklos.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Morin.
Here.
And Howell is absent.
All right, very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right. So, any agenda updates this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have supplemental information on your public hearing, item 8A. This information was prepared in response to questions from council members. The information has been provided to the council, and there are additional copies at the back table for anybody who's interested.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, we'll start off under scheduled presentations. First item there.
Okay, your first scheduled presentation tonight is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming National Police Week, May 14th to the 20th, and Peace Officers' Memorial Day as May 15th in the city of Folsom.
All right, thank you. And if I could have Chief Renaud, and I believe Commander Hillman, and Lieutenant Browning join me up front. All right. So, we do, we're going to recognize, this is one of the beauties of being a full-service city. We're going to recognize a few of our departments here, just getting the proclamation straight here. But, and this is something we can do as a community very directly, as a council, and as a community, to recognize these folks that work for all of us and serve us day in and day out, every hour of every day. And we're starting off with our police department here. And, you know, just in light of even a very recent incident yesterday where we had an unfortunate shooting on Highway 50 just down the road from us, so a reminder that our police department and all the police departments in this region are at risk every day. And this proclamation is especially well-worded, so I'm going to read every one of the wherethes here. Looks like somebody's taking credit for that. Very good. So, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming National Police Week as of May 14th through 20th, 2017, and Peace Officers' Memorial Day, May 15th, 2017, in the city of Folsom. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have adopted Public Law 87-54, designating May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in recognition of law enforcement officers nationwide who have sacrificed their lives or have been disabled in the performance of their duties. Whereas Public Law 87-54 also designates the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week in recognition of the service provided by thousands of federal, state, and local law enforcement officers. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of those who dedicate their lives to the law enforcement profession and to keeping our communities safe. Whereas Folsom police officers and officers throughout the state and nation risk their lives on a daily basis to maintain peace within the community and protect the lives and property of our citizens. Whereas since the attack on the World Trade Center on September 11th, 2001, the demands, the risks, and the commitments placed on our nation's police officers have increased significantly. Whereas the members of our Folsom Police Department provide a vital public service safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of this city. Now therefore, I, Andy Morin, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and entire community, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week in the city of Folsom. Be it further proclaimed that May 15th, 2017, shall be Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the city of Folsom, and that the United States' flag shall be flown at half-staff at all city offices on that date. Proclaim this ninth day of May 2017, and please join me in a nice round of appreciation for our Folsom Police Department.
Thank you very much for once again recognizing this week that we take once a year to remember our comrades, our peers, our friends who have fallen in the line of duty or become gravely disabled and injured in the line of duty. And while it is a week of sadness and remembrance, it is also a week of great pride for all of us, for citizens and law enforcement officers alike, to know that there are people who are willing to serve so selflessly and put themselves in physical chamber danger so that all of us can enjoy the freedoms that we do enjoy every day. My thanks along to those fallen and injured officers, along with the thanks of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Okay, your next item is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 21st through May 27th as National Public Works Week and May 17th as City Works Day in the city of Folsom.
Okay, so if I could have Christine Brainard come up, as well as Michelle Sama, our administrative assistant. So, again, another one of our very own city departments that we all rely on as a community here. And this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 21st through the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week, and May 17th as City Works Day in the city of Folsom. Whereas public work services provided in our community aren't integral part of our residents' everyday lives. Whereas the support of understanding and informed residents is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, storm drainage, streets, public buildings, transit, solid waste, recycling, and hazardous materials. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of the city of Folsom crews and officials. Whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who provide these services are materially influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of well-performed work. Whereas the Folsom City Charter and Folsom Municipal Code encourages broad, informed public participation in civic affairs. Whereas the city of Folsom seeks and encourages the advice and input from the public on matters related to the city, and whereas the city of Folsom desires to provide information to the public about municipal operations to its residents. Now therefore, I, Andy Morin, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and entire community, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week, and May 17th, 2017, as City Works Day in the city of Folsom, and call upon the residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public works and to recognize the contribution that public works and other city departments make to our daily, to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for our residents. Proclaim this ninth day of May 2017. So, nice round of recognition and appreciation for all those departments that were mentioned here. Again, all employees of the city of Folsom that work very hard on a day-to-day basis to make sure that we hardly notice what they're all doing. So, nice round of applause for public work.
Okay, so City Works Day will be on Wednesday, May 17th. It's an opportunity to explore the city of Folsom and see what it takes to run a city. It's also a chance to explore our fire trucks and fire engines, police cars, even a garbage truck, the passenger seat, and the Folsom Stage Line buses as well. It'll be from 9:00 until noon, and more information about the event is on our website at folsom.ca.us. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda.
Next, Mr. Mayor, is business from the floor. You have one request to speak for Mr. Todd Pfeffer.
Very good. Good evening, Todd.
Good evening. As you all are well aware, Empire Ranch Road has a verified speeding problem. The city's traffic study found that one out of every six to seven cars are driving faster than 58 miles per hour in this 45 zone. The police department's citation data shows a projected 223% increase in speeding from 2016 to 2017. I'm here this evening to request for the fifth time that stop signs be added at the three-way intersection at Woodhead Street and Empire Ranch Road, the midpoint between the crosswalks at Broadstone Parkway and East Nataoma Street, which span 1.2 miles. I'd appreciate being contacted by somebody with the council or city to let me know if this request is approved or denied. I'd like to leave some photographs with you that I took showing evidence of the speeding problem, four of which show mature trees that were sheared off at the base from the violent impact of cars driving at high rates of speed. This doesn't include the fifth tree that was destroyed from the serious accident at Empire Ranch Road and Broadstone Parkway last Monday, May 1st. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Please leave those with Scott over there. Thanks, Todd. Okay, any other requests to speak on business from the floor?
You have no other request to speak.
Okay, so that moves us to our next item.
Next item is your consent calendar.
Okay, so we have items 7A through G. Any requests to pull for separate vote or questions or discussion? Well, that was nice. I'll second. So, moved by Councilmember Miklos and seconded by myself, please call the roll on those items.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. Okay, moving right along.
Okay, your next item tonight will be your first public hearing, and that is Resolution Number 9920. This is a resolution adopting the city manager's fiscal year 2017-18, operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. While Mr. Francis is preparing the very brief presentation that we have to recap last meeting's present, comprehensive presentation on the budget, I would just offer that there have been no significant changes to the budget since you saw them last. During the last introduction of the budget, we did receive some commentary relative to some modifications of the sports netting at Livermore Park. We have made a minor adjustment to the budget to provide for the balance of that funding to come from Fund 412, which is the Park Improvement Fund, which is an appropriate fund to pay for that facility out of as it's a program expansion. And so, the $35,000 balance or less will be funded out of that, and the other 35 remains in the general fund for that particular purchase. Otherwise, the budget is in this, presented to you this evening, is the same substantially as it was during the introduction. So, I'll let Mr. Francis run through some recaps, just to remind everybody what that is.
Okay, and just before Jim starts, since we're on that note, is everybody on the council here comfortable with the modification just described by Everett? Are we all good there? Okay, very good. Thank you. Carry it away, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, your chief financial officer. And I'll be very brief, just hitting some of the highlights of the proposed budget. As you know, there are seven actual funds that you'll be approving that total $201 million within the budget. The general fund is $81,970,164. We anticipate having a surplus of about $700,000 at the end of next fiscal year, which would bring your unassigned fund balance up to $13.4 million, or 16.5% of expenditures. And that, you can see, is an increase over this year, where we anticipate being at $12,750,000. Again, at 16.5% of your expenditures, 15% being your policy guideline as the minimum. So, we've reached that threshold. The budget has in it 8.2 new positions. Seven of those are in the general fund, and the 1.2 are in solid waste and transit. The new positions are three firefighters, two office assistants, two dispatchers, two transit drivers, a GIS analyst, an inventory clerk, and a maintenance worker. And there's also deletions of a section manager, a fire mechanic, associate engineer, and a permanent part-time transit driver. The general fund appropriation by department is broken down by salaries, benefits, and so on. As you will recall, we went over last time the fact that this ratio of allocation has been with us for a long time, and it hasn't changed much over the years. This just shows, again, the detail of that breakdown. Basic priorities that were tried to be addressed in the budget were to strengthen our core services, and about $3.3 million went towards that. That includes the new staffing positions, some equipment that we had, and vehicles. In there, there was some safety equipment and also some vehicle purchases that were part of that strengthening of the core services. We did have a priority to invest in technology this year, and through that, we have a number of upgrades, some new software we're trying to purchase to make things more efficient. And the big item there is really the geographic information system, the analyst, and us getting back into that program like we were before the recession. We are trying to still address some deferred maintenance, so buildings and infrastructure, and mainly this is in the fire department, police department, and the library. And then we also had a priority to invest in the future, and that was to look at our reserves, both the general fund reserves and some of our trust funds, and also some money towards economic development. On the enterprise funds, water, wastewater, solid waste, and transit, we've reviewed those, that they are all doing fairly well in terms of their revenue. Water's revenue is increasing with the end of the drought. Wastewater and solid waste are going up at a slower rate, and transit's pretty much funded by intergovernmental revenues. So, we feel they're all in good shape, although we did mention that we are undergoing a rate study that would be presented to you later in the year. And the CIP, these are simply the major projects that we went over last time for fiscal year 17-18. And, again, not all the projects, but these were the largest ones that will either be completed and/or started during the fiscal year. And with that, I'll end. I ask if there's any questions.
All right, Jim, thanks for the recap there. So, questions, comments, and discussion on the budget? We start, anything, Steve? Anything to add? Good, Ernie?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Not that I am against what I'm asking, it's just I don't know what the answer is, okay? So, and here, I'm looking at the summation in the beginning of the area.
Okay.
And one area, you have $125,000 for economic development. Would you explain what that is?
$50,000 of that is to FedCor, and the $75,000 is at the discretion of the city. It's undesignated as to use.
Okay. The same way now, I think I asked a question before, I may know the answer. The $3,500,000 in cash, that's general fund money?
No, some of it's a loan that we had from Secog to complete that project.
Okay. And then the modifications on the railroad crossing at Iron Point?
That's, yeah, I believe Dave spoke to that before. Is that Measure A funds or not?
I don't recall. We moved the funding around a little bit. It probably is gas tax would be my guess.
Gas tax.
Well, what are we doing? Are we?
Oh, okay.
We're getting rid of the bump at the crossing there on Iron Point as it goes up the hill.
Yeah.
Launching, the launching point.
Are we going more into detail on the, or is it asking?
Microphone on?
I think so. It says.
Okay, yeah, just get a little closer. So, what was the question, Ernie?
Well, I asked Jim just before, short notice, and on the back of our thing.
Oh, okay, so those notes there?
Yeah, I'd like to sort of explain why I asked those questions.
Sure.
And you answered it with the economic, $50,000 goes to FedCor?
Yes.
Okay, somebody refresh me on the bid. That's the project, and I talked to Jim a little bit, that we set up based on the size of the property owned down in Otown. And just remind me how that works.
The, when that was set up, it was based on the size of the property and where the property was located. There were five zones, I believe. And then each zone had a rate that would be charged based on the size within that. And that's, that was then applied to all the properties in the district. We collect it through the property tax, and it comes in. We pay it as well as all the other owners.
Is it just the commercial property, or is it residential as well?
No, it's just the commercial.
That's what I thought I remembered, yeah.
Well, my part, and you did give all the data here, which is, I appreciate that, see the last three years, how much we contributed, the other owners down there. We being the primary of the courtyard.
Yes.
Okay? And how the other owners. And now we're projecting, or $17,35,000 dollars, plus. I'm saying, what do we get back to know what they spend it on? And I have a reason that I'm asking that question.
I can probably add a little bit of color to that. Councilmember Sheldon, you'll recall that back in 2013, the P-Bid, which is a property and business improvement district, was extended by the council for a period of 10 years going into 2023. Under P-Bid law, which is state law, you must have a management district plan that's established at the time the tax is initiated. That management district plan is some 50 pages that outlines the methodologies of apportionment and the types of services that could be paid down there. So, it is quite specific, but in general terms, without getting into that too deeply, it's really designed to provide a layer of maintenance in that area that's above and beyond what the normal city maintenance level might be for similar facilities. And so, the best way I can describe this to you is conversations that I have with my Parks and Recreation Director, who has kind of coined the phrase that this is our Disneyland's Main Street, right? If you go down Disneyland Main Street, there's a level of maintenance that happens there that's kind of above and beyond because it is Main Street Disneyland, USA, right? And so, this is our effort to recognize that our jewel in this community is our Sutter Street area. And so, part of the P-Bid responsibility is to keep this up and really protect the jewel that is our historic district. That's not the only thing that we do, because we have a base maintenance level that we handle. The P-Bid handles some, and then many of the store owners themselves will do what they need to do out in front in the public spaces to make sure their stores look nice. And you'll recall that in the historic district, the public property runs threshold to threshold. And so, it's rather unique when you compare it to other commercial districts where you might have a private parking lot or a private threshold. So, it's largely keeping up that maintenance, which includes landscape maintenance, street maintenance, sidewalk maintenance.
Well, okay, now I'll ask my question, why I asked that question. In here, we contribute $64,000 of the $135,000, okay? We also have in our funding on the park and rec, I think, $123,000 or $23,000 to do the pressure cleaning of the sidewalks. I may disagree that that's the Disneyland of the parks in our town. It's more the Disneyland of the historical aspects of our town, which I accept. I want to keep it clean, I want to make it nice. I'm not arguing that. What I would ask you, do we get a financial statement like we get from finance on what's been expended and where and when?
We do. The historic P-Bid issues an annual report every year. They don't have that on me right at the moment, but they do issue an annual report of their financial activities.
Okay, I would like to do that because I have, I have a, when I went down to, a year ago, two years ago, down to the antique fair, and I went into the garage, that's where the bathrooms are, which they really need for that type of event. The park and rec guy that was doing the job, because you have funding for the garage cleaning or the bathrooms on park and rec's thing, to me, that should come out of that bid. Okay, let me finish. And the park and rec guy was just busting his butt to get it done and keep up with the crowds that were there for the antique fair. And in addition to that, he had to go to all the parks and clean the parks. That was his job. It was a, you know, Saturday deal. And I said right then, the event that is done, the antique event done by the merchants association should fit some of that bill rather than out of a park and rec. And so, that's my concern, because he could not keep up with it and go and do the other job. He was trying, but he couldn't do it. So, finally, he got off of the parks and he stayed there full-time, and he did a real good job and kept it clean because it was a mess, and it wasn't his fault, okay? It was a concept. So, I asked at that time, that would the business association, which I think puts that on, would they fund a portion to have a custodian other than park and rec who's trying to do two jobs to do it? And I thought the bid would be the logical way it comes out. So, I don't know. That's the reason I asked this question.
Yeah, so, I think I have some good information for you. So, the P-Bid does contribute $27,000 to maintenance and improvements down there, which include any number of things. Special events, however, are handled a little bit differently. And so, depending on the event, depending on the time, depending on what it is, there are contributions from various special event hosts, if you will. And that could include the Folsom Historic District Association, which are the managers of the P-Bid, or it may be some other organization that's handling events down there. The P-Bid in and of itself doesn't maintain the parking garage because that's wholly a city structure. And you'll recall, and this is a little bit complex of a matter, because at the very beginning of the P-Bid organization, those properties down there were owned by the Redevelopment Agency, which is an associated but independent corporation of the city with a different funding source. And so, when the state took their draconian action of eliminating redevelopment agencies some years ago, our choices were simple, and that is do what we needed to do to maintain our property for public use down there, which we did, but that also caused the city to absorb the costs and the tax burden that is associated with the P-Bid. And so, when these were formed, largely, there were redevelopment agencies. Now, there are none. But at any rate, the objective here is to make sure that the public property that we own is maintained to the standards that we would profess to want them maintained, and that the main, and the public property that everybody enjoys, particularly our public rights of way, it's a teamwork effort between the city, between the FHDA, and between the event holders that hold events down on the plaza down there. So, there, I believe what I'm saying is the situation that you're suggesting should exist, does.
Well, maybe I don't see it in effect at times I was down there. That's all.
Well, yeah, and I can't speak to that particular event, but by and large, that is the way they work.
Okay. And that, you know, just, if I have a park and rec guy pressure the sidewalks of his historic district seems to be a stretch.
Well, let me offer this. Parks and Recreation is responsible for many things. Maintenance of our parks is one. Maintenance of all of the city's vertical infrastructure is the other. And that just happens to be the organizational place where there's, where that staff and those dollars exist, because over the years, we have consolidated from across multiple departments into a single department so that we can maintain the standards for our public asset, our public asset maintenance. That just happens to be in Parks and Recreation, so it's not exactly true to say it's a Parks and Rec person that's doing that. It is a person who works in the Parks and Recreation Department who is assigned to maintaining that infrastructure.
Yeah, well, that brings you.
Similar to City Hall. City Hall's probably the closest example.
Well, the only, only concern I got, just what you said is my concern. You say you consolidate over the years. I know we had to do a lot of things in the recession, okay? Losing 100 people, we had to make a lot of reorganizations. But when you reorganize and put the facility function under Park and Rec, okay? And then you consolidate with the maintenance of the Park and Rec that maintains the fields. That's, that's a problem, that's what we fund that for. It gets to be, when you only, only fund two or three in the facility, utility people, you're gonna overlap and you're gonna take people out of the Park and Rec, away from the parks, that's what they're there for. And they have been doing, we've been doing that. I say, we may have to add something down in the facility to make sure we don't, from Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I understand that, that it could seem like it's competitive, there's a competitive interest, but what I offer to you is that consolidation wasn't really necessarily a product of any budget downturn, but one of efficiencies. And I look at these organizationally as complementary services, not, not competitive. When we have needs in the park, we fund them. When we have needs in the facilities, we fund them. Maybe not to the amount that we would like, but in no case is the fact that one department being responsible for both of these maintenance activities caused one to suffer at the hand of the other. That's not how the organization works.
If you fund 10 people for park maintenance, you validated that that's what they need to do, park maintenance. You fund three to do utility, and that's all the buildings in the city that we're responsible for. If three isn't enough, they will take them out of park maintenance and then the park maintenance suffers. That's just the way it's happening. And if you don't think it's happening, you need to look closer because it is happening. Okay? I mean, you can solve the problem. If there is, maybe you don't think it is, I think it is. All I ask is just take a look at it.
Understood.
I think that's all I got right now.
Okay, thanks, Ernie. Roger, comments and questions?
I spent a lot of time reviewing this as this is my first budget review. So it's, I gotta say, the work that you guys put in, it's admirable and everything looks pretty good to me. I had a couple of concerns, the city managers addressed them. And I'm actually quite confident in, in saying that I'd like to move to approve.
So, okay. So we'll hold that motion. I do have a request to speak on this item, and it is a public hearing. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And our speaker is Loretta Hettinger. Loretta?
Not in a hurry.
Jim just doesn't want to give up a spot there. Good evening, Loretta.
He's got it all warmed up. I'm Loretta Hettinger, and I'm speaking as the Vice President of the Heritage Preservation League. I'm here tonight to underscore the request that we put in the cover letter that we included with our comments on the draft general plan. We really believe that the Community Development Department needs a long-range planner. The existing staff planners have pretty much all they can do to uphold Folsom's quality levels in dealing with the new development. And I know from experience that long-range work gives way to the project applications that are needing to be evaluated and processed. There's a need for a planner who specializes in the city of Folsom that is already developed. It's, it became very clear in reviewing the draft general plan that there isn't such a person there now. The 70,000-odd people who already live here can't be well-served any longer by the bits and pieces of time that the current planners have to devote. Consultants are very valuable, and I'm in no way suggesting that we don't need to continue to access their expertise. But there's just no substitute for someone whose daily focus, year in and year out, is the already-developed part of Folsom, which is now pretty large.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Loretta. Okay.
Can I make one more comment before you?
You bet. So that is, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I have no other requests to speak on this item, so, Ernie?
I want to compliment Jim and his crew because this is a great report. It's, the way it's organized, it's very simple to look at and, and something you should keep all year and use it. It just shows the professionalism that the finance department gives us. I just want to compliment you on that.
Great. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that comment. I guess the best, the perfect example is actually Roger. Because of the fact that this is his first budget, he was able to understand it pretty clearly, was able to comprehend it very well, is because the way you guys have laid it out and the time he took with him, I think is, is huge. It's a compliment to budgets I've seen since 1994 to now. They were so easy to comprehend, they're so easy to follow, they're totally transparent and then some. And other than some tweaks and minor things that we talk about up here, it's, it's easy for us to talk about those tweaks and things before compared to what it used to be. So I, you know, day in and day out, I'm just amazed at what you've been able to accomplish, Jim, and every year, and as well as Everett and the rest of your team. It's amazing, the little nuances you put every year to make it actually easier and easier. And I really like this budget for all the forecasting and the different dynamic in the forecasting you guys have put in. It's actually made a lot easier for us to know what's going on even farther down the lines so that we can make right decisions in real time as well as three, five, and seven years out and have a little more educated knowledge, if you will, instead of just guessing. So my congratulations, everybody.
I have one more thing.
You bet.
I hate to keep talking.
And I'll second the motion, by the way.
Thank you, Steve. And I, Ernie, you do not hate to keep talking, so don't say.
Well, I'm going to though, I guess. When I read through this, I kept saying to myself, I'm looking for an allocation for a printing press. Okay, there must be one somewhere because I figured with all the increases I'm seeing from 17 to 18, someday we're gonna have to print our own money to keep alive. Okay, that's a little sarcastic, but I mean, that, that's, it came across to me. I said, wow. But, you know, back in, before I came on the council in '09, and in '07, we started to see some decline in the, in the reserves. It's right there, you could see it, it was doing, we're doing good now. This city has done great in recovering from the recession as the way we have. But when I think of what was gonna, what we're going to get down in, south of 50, and I'm all for it, do it right, do it well, it's gonna be a period of time that we're gonna have a big financial impact. And I look, I'm not picking on the cops, okay? I look at when I came on, I think the budget was 16 million, okay? And now it's 21 million. And I'm not saying, things, some things are very expensive. But when, as Steve says, it's great the way we forecast. I think Jim does a good job, and he cautions us a number of times. Be careful in the future because you, you gotta live within your means. There are things we have to, I think, in the future, within the next year or two, just keep an open mind that maybe the way we're doing it now is not the way we can do it again and say solvent, okay? And I'm not advocating cutting pay for employees because I think they all deserve what they got, but we gotta have it to give it to them. And there may be other ways we have to, to consider. So all I'm saying is, looking at this budget does give me some reservation, but we've been, this council and the leadership of the management and the executive staff has got us going in the right direction. I hope it continues. I have no reason to think it won't. But I offer that red flag. Don't get too comfortable because we have a lot of stuff going on nationally that could affect us. Like, we didn't create the financial back in '08, but we, we sure had to respond to it. So all I say is, when reading this whole thing, it's obvious that we have to be very, very conservative and, and still be, treat our, or where we are with the 446 employees we have. That's, that's simple. It's not, that's five or six up here. It's the 446 that make this city run every day. We have to take care of them, but at the same time, we gotta be sure that jobs are sustainable. That's all I would say.
Okay, is that the last you got, Ernie?
Yep.
Okay, so I just have a couple of comments and then just a question kind of for next year. So, so comment-wise, and, and, you know, bringing up, again, examples of how much we spend on our various budgets, and I always like to go back to this 1966 issue of the Folsom Telegraph that my mother-in-law gave me. It was the 110th anniversary of the founding of the city of Folsom in 1856, and it shows a pie chart on there as to the percentages of the city budget at that point that were spent on the various departments. And, and it is very similar to what we're spending today. Now, I think the total budget was about $800,000 that year. I can't remember exactly. In fact, I think Christine Brainard has that, has that paper in, in her capable hands as far as just a lot of that information. But I, but I bring that up because it's something I bring up occasionally as far as, I, I think that has served the city well, and I know Jim brings that up as far as those pie charts showing that balance. It's a very good point, Ernie. And, and yes, as, as our budget grows, I expect those department budgets to grow because they're asked to do more as our city grows. So, but I appreciate the balance and, and the conservative nature of the budget. And that just brings me to just my one kind of question thought for the future. So, so our policy is a 15% goal for unrestricted fund balance. We're at 16.5% and I'm, I'm kind of, you know, after what the lessons we learned going through the recession, that, you know, next year, if our city manager and finance folks are comfortable with, you know, maybe moving that into a higher percentage, I don't think any of us on the council would be resistant to that. If that makes you feel more comfortable to, you know, try and maintain a reserve that's a few percentage points higher, you know, I think we would all welcome that. And, you know, we can bring that up next, our next budget cycle.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And certainly, we look at the $700,000 anticipated surplus for this year as a floor, not a ceiling. Because you, you did hear CFO Francis in the first presentation suggest that we're not recommending to stay at the 16.5, but we'd like to push it a little bit north of that. What those numbers are, you know, is kind of a year-by-year consideration that we'll put in front of the council, but we hear you and agree.
Okay.
I'd like to say one thing, though, but the city manager told me a long time ago, and I, I never forgot it. And that was, it's nice to have a reserve of, boom, $20 million and $30 million, only if your city is functioning. There are times you don't save it, you have to use it. I think everybody, all the staff people out here realize that. Sometimes we can invest a certain amount only if we can keep our city running right now.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And, and I think if, if I may quote our city manager, absolutely, it's, it's not about, you know, building a balance sheet, building a community, and I always think that's very well said. So you can get overly aggressive on putting money in the bank. We want to make sure that there's an appropriate amount there, but that, you know, everything in the city that needs attention is getting it. So, so with that, a motion to a, to move the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget by Council Member Gaylord and seconded by Council Member Miklos, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is a public hearing adopting an indoor marijuana cultivation permit fee, and there is a request that this item be continued to the June 13 council meeting.
Very good, thank you. And I assume that moves us on to our next item.
It does. And your last discussion item of the evening is your new business item 9A. This is resolution number 9923. It's a resolution of consideration of the City Council of the City of Folsom to amend the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area number two, established in and for community facilities, district number 16, the islands at Park Shore, and related matters.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I do need you to entertain a motion to continue with the previous action.
I thought, I thought since that was agendized as being continued, I did need to do that.
Some move to continue, item 8B.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and second that. So a motion to continue item 8B under public hearing and seconded by myself, please call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, Jim?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, the Chief Financial Officer. This resolution is a resolution of consideration for CFD 16, the Islands. Taking this action will set and give notice of a public hearing for you to consider amending the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area two of CFD 16. This is done in order to account for the project decreasing from 168 single-family units to 126 units, while at the same time maintaining the requirements and costs for service maintenance. There are no other changes to the authorized facilities, the authorized services, or the boundaries of CFD 16. And I would recommend that you adopt resolution 9923.
Okay, very good. So questions for Jim on the item? Pretty routine stuff. Okay, I have no request to speak on this item. Anybody? Okay. Moved by Councilmember Miklos, seconded by Councilmember Sheldon. And with that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes. And that moves us to...
Takes you to city manager report.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. It's get outside time in Folsom. So I have a, just a short list of reminders, information of which you can find out on our website at www.folsom.ca.us. But if you'd like to join the mayor in his annual ride downtown, the 10th Annual Folsom Mayor's Ride is this Thursday, May 11th. It's, meets in the historic district with time to fuel up with breakfast goodies and coffees prior to the 8:30 a.m. departure for the 30-mile or so ride downtown. The ride finishes at the Capitol Bike Fest. The free light rail tickets will be able, be available for participants who aren't looking forward to the 30-mile uphill ride back to Folsom. The Love My Mom 5K is Saturday, May 13th. That's a great opportunity for you to get your mom out for, on Mother's Day weekend and, and run a nice race with her. City Works Day, you already heard about, that's May 17th, opportunity to get out and, and meet city employees, talk about what they do, and see some of the super cool equipment that we have, particularly our new fire truck, Truck 35, and a number of other attractive pieces of equipment that kids love every year. This is a very, very, very popular event. Run With Nature makes its annual return, its 34th annual return on May 20th. And that race takes place along the Humbug Willow Creek Trail, surrounded by acres of our open space around town. These are non-traditional races, and I've heard that that's the new popular thing. So if you want to run a 5.8K fitness walk or run, and a 13K chip timed run, Folsom Run With Nature is for you. And you can find that information at folsomrunwithnature.com. And one of my favorites, and this project has been around a good long time, probably 20 years or so, but on June 3rd, we're gonna reopen the historic Orange Vale Avenue Bridge. If you like Rainbow Bridge, we have a, we have a treasure tucked back away, right in the, in the ravine between Folsom and Orange Vale that is just like Rainbow Bridge. It's an old concrete arch structure bridge that has been in disrepair for some time. We spent a long time working on plans to refurbish that bridge and to maintain its historic arch structure, but bring it up to modern standards and reopen that to traffic. So on June 3rd, we'll have a little celebration at 10 a.m. right there on Orange Vale Avenue at Greenback Lane, out where the bridge is. So look forward to seeing you all there and look forward to getting that bridge back open. And thanks to my good crew in Public Works for shepherding that project through. With that?
Good evening.
Get outside. It's beautiful.
Thanks, Everett. Roger? All right. Steve?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. Last week at SACOG, or the week before, I should say, we ordered a contract to a, a bike company to start a pilot project in West Sacramento, Sacramento, and Davis, whereas you've heard about all over the country where you can actually pick up a bike, move it someplace else, and so on and so forth, and you get charged for the distance and so on and so forth. To make a very long story short, it was a two-and-a-half-year project that SACOG took on, went through many vendors. We're happy with the vendor that we selected, especially after some additional negotiations after another vendor stepped in and offered something we couldn't refuse. These guys stepped in and actually made better on it. So I'm excited because I volunteered Folsom as a second pilot project area to try this. So we're gonna give it a look-see, if you will, and we're gonna evaluate it every six months and see how it's happening. And what I'm really, really pleased with, SoB Bikes is the, is the vendor. They have this down to a science. GPS, the theft recovery, tracking, everything is so much down to a science, it would take me two and a half years to explain it because that's how long it took me to figure it out. Anyway, but I did volunteer Folsom as, as the next phase to be tried in because I think we have a lot to offer, not only with our trails, but some of the connectivity we have within the city on pavement is a perfect example between the college and the shopping and, and the businesses, I think. I think it'd be a great opportunity to try. So I did volunteer in that regard. And last but not least, besides what I brought back from Washington with this horrible allergy cold scenario, what I did bring back was, they don't have a clue what they're doing back there, quite frankly. It's somewhat disappointing, and I say this because I have the utmost respect for our local representatives. I, I believe, in my opinion, we still spend too much time seeking out the same people that are right here in Sacramento. My, my opinion, and I've shared it with the group, is when we go back to cap to cap, we need to touch people and touch offices and touch agencies that aren't familiar with our needs, instead of rehashing people that are right in our backyard that already are familiar with our needs. Now, having said that, I have to say, however, that the electives that are from this region, when they do greet us and meet us and talk to us in a more in-depth conversation, one-on-one, they have kind of, especially, I gotta say, Congresswoman Matsui has really gotten what we're all about in the region, not just Sacramento, but the region. I think Dr. Baer is coming right along, right, right alongside of it, and a couple of others in the area, not so much, but they're getting there. But what's clear is that they really don't have a good, clear direction, not only from within themselves as Congress, but they still haven't figured out totally the direction that the administration is wanting to go. So one good news and one silver lining of all this, I think transportation not only is gonna be protected, and from the old Tiger grants, and those are the grants where we all get to fight and appropriate and authorize and, and all those other kind of things, not only is I believe that's gonna be protected, but it sounds like an early infancy negotiations that it might actually be increased, which is very good for everybody in the region, especially, I like to say selfishly, Folsom's one of the leaders in the region on the transportation projects we put on the ground and/or we figure out a way to fund them, and I think we'd probably be in first place to, to get some of these additional funds with some of the needs we already, as I call it, shovel-ready to go, such as the connector, which move things around, because it's not a federal-funded project, but we can, we can swap, and we know how to do that. So overall, I think the region as a whole, it's one of the rare times I've seen the group as a whole be on the same page. I know many times other colleagues might have been back there, and, and it just seems like you got these splinters all working in separate groups, even though you came over on the same airplane and share the same bus, and the same cocktail receptions. Once you leave there, it seems like everybody was on their own doing these backdoor deals in the hallways down there when we're supposed to be doing it as a group. I was very pleased that this group stayed as a group, the message was a group, and everything was about the region, which is nice. It wasn't Sacramento, it was the region. So congratulations to Metro Chamber, it was a wonderful event. Certainly, I think it hit a home run and done some, but they also have my comments about what I think we need to do as far as expand the effectiveness so that, that amount of people coming back speak in the regional voice. So with that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Ernie?
Well, last year, I had an option. Do I make the city council meeting, or do I go to Vista High School and present some awards? And I figured, well, if I planned it right, I'm a pretty good planner, right, I can get to make the awards, and I can get back over here without speeding and have a cop arrest me. And I, so I made that option. I was gonna go to Vista. I went to Vista, did my thing, scattered out of there, usually I save a whole deal, came walking here and drove in here, 20 minutes to seven, okay? Only to find that this was vacant. I thought the Martians had took over this whole facility, there wasn't a soul in that parking lot but my car. And I thought, wow, and that's when I heard there was a 13-minute passing of the budget. And I said, well, this year, I'm making a, a different choice. Vista tonight is having their awards night. Next week is Folsom High will have their awards night, and I will make that, because I'm open that night. But it was exciting to, again, to go through the process of interviewing these kids and see how great they are, and how smart they are. And Vista is a very good school, Folsom's a very good school, all our schools are very good. But tonight is a first, and for Vista, well, for FAA, we've been doing Lowest Young Scholarships since 1990. And today at Vista, there's a threesome. They have triplets, the Russ Muesen family, a girl and two boys are graduating there, and each one of them are over 4.0, and they all will receive their awards at the Lowest Young Scholarship. It's the first time in the history of FAA, maybe anywhere, that we had triplets. It'd be award winners and, and presentations, so it was a great, I'm sure, I hated to miss it, because I had all kinds of jokes to do, but maybe, maybe I'll find somebody, but there is nobody in Folsom that are triplets. It's exciting, so it's one of the highlights of this town, is when you get the chance to see what the schools are doing and what they're producing, how proud we should be of not only what we do, but what the school district does, and what our teachers do, and what our parents do. They're all, they're all team, they're all part of this. And so I just wanted to make, make that remark and commend everybody involved in that. And I hope these young folks here, their day will come, and they can do the same thing. That's it.
Great, thanks, Ernie. And just a few things on the mayor's ride, which is on Thursday. I will not be making it all the way downtown, I need to get to work, so I'll be cutting it short. I'll only be going about 20 miles, I need to get to Watanoke Minno. So, so I'll start out with everybody and hang with them, but, but I'll be peeling off to get to my office. But again, thanks for everybody. Robert, I know you really do a great job helping get people ramped up for that, so thanks for all your work on that. The city manager and myself, and assistant city manager, and, let's see, I believe Christine was there as well, we did the, we're invited over to Intel. They recognized their volunteers in the community, which they reward the organizations they volunteer for with some cash donations. And I can't remember all the exact numbers, but I know one of the bigger ones was all the schools in the Folsom-Cordova School District, I believe, were like $330,000 worth of donations. This goes on every year. So, so my thanks to that corporate presence in our community. We know they do so much and like to stay under the radar, but they do need to be recognized for that. And, and just in general, Steve mentioned his participation back in Washington DC at the cap to cap, and that is a lot of work. And I just wanted to thank Steve for taking that on, and, and Roger and Ernie and Vice Mayor Howell, this is an incredibly busy month. This is when we all notice the demands of time, and, and I just want to personally thank all of you for, you know, Ernie mentioned, you know, being at these awards thing and his involvement with the FAA, and, you know, everything that we do to try and get out there, things that we're invited to. So Roger and Ernie and Steve and Vice Mayor Howell, just thanks for spreading yourselves thin and doing everything you can. This is indeed a busy month, so, so as our city manager said, there's lots to do out there, so get out and do it. So with that, meeting adjourned.